All right. I'm going to call to order the town budget workshop for 2021, 2022. Can I get a roll call?
Mayor Paul Schalhoub.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Schalhoub.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold. Councilmember Valtine Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavone.
Here.
All right. Let's have a moment of silence for Frank Rankin, eighty-nine years old, former longtime resident of the town, and Bud English, father of the former councilmember Jim English at ninety-one years old. May their memories be eternal. Pastor, would you be so kind as to lead us in an invocation?
It would be my, my pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Let's look to the Lord. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord, you His servants. Praise the name of the Lord. Let the name of the Lord be praised both now and forever. From the rising of the sun to the place where it sets, the name of the Lord is to be praised, for the Lord is exalted over all the nations, His glory above the heavens. Heavenly Father, we declare your goodness. And Father, in this place, this very day, we ask for your wisdom, your knowledge. Would you grant us understanding that we would have good discernment? Father, we come before you in thy precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Would you be so kind as to stay and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my honor. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. All right. I have a presentation of the proposed 2021, 2022 town budget by Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen. I have a short presentation, shouldn't take more than fifty-five or sixty minutes to go run through the brief budget. All right, I have fourteen slides. I'll try and make it as comprehensive and as quick as possible. I was informed yesterday that we need to not read every slide, but it was a little too late at my presentation, so I will be reading some of the information on these slides. Our core mission, as it was last year, is to provide police services, code compliance, utility services, permitting services, and general government. I say that because the economy is not quite recovered to be pre-COVID. So we're still having some challenges meeting all of our requirements this year, or I should say, all the things that we would like to do. So we focused on our core mission and put our priorities in the order that we have on the screen. That being said, we are going to be able, both from a financial perspective and from a COVID perspective, I believe, to reengage with our community starting in December. So I have budgeted, starting with the tree lighting and the parade, to have all of our events back in 2022. So there we are, tree lighting, the parade, the barbecue, the lake cleanup, the fishing tournament, all the things that we do, starting in December. There's no change in the millage rate again this year. I think this is year number eleven that we've held at six point two seven nine eight. The current year rollback would be five point nine seven seven five, and our current year taxable value is three hundred point one million. That's up five point one two percent, and we should congratulate all of our neighbors because we've, we've broken through a milestone. The general fund budget labor, there's no change in staffing, and there's no change in benefits, either the health insurance or the retirement. There is a merit increase of three and a half percent, and that's following the CBA contract. The CBA contract language says that we look at the Consumer Price Index, and we give them one point above Consumer Price Index to a maximum of three and a half percent. So they capped out at three and a half percent, and we gave all staff, or we're proposing to give all staff, three and a half percent. Garbage collection fee is up three percent per the contract, and we have in the capital budget seventy-five thousand dollars, most of which is the half of the IT upgrade that we talked about before. Fifty-five thousand is being spent this year, and fifty-five thousand is being spent next year on the IT upgrade. That's coming from the ARPA monies. The utility fund, next up, is not a balanced budget, and that's because we have some large capital expenditures, and those are coming out of the bond monies that we have put away for just this purpose from both sixteen and two thousand and nineteen. Staffing, again, we're proposing a three and a half percent salary increase. There's no change in the number of folks, and there's no change in the health insurance and retirement. There's no new debt proposed. We have lowered the general fund transfer to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from two hundred and twenty. A hundred and eighty thousand was where we were several years ago. We bumped it up to two twenty. We've moved it back down this year. We are looking at two new leases this year. They are replacement values for two leases that we currently have. I was asked to tell you something that's not on the slide, and that is, we'll probably make money on these leases because we're selling, we're returning two three-quarter ton pickups, and the value on those pickups right now is higher than what we bought them for. So, and we have on these pickups very little add-on that changes the price, so we expect to actually make a little bit of a profit. We have some initiatives this year to finish. We're finished, we want to finish and implement the rate study. We want to build the Forest Hill Boulevard Grinder Pump Station for Mrs. Hubbard at fourteen seventy-five Forest Hill Boulevard. We're finishing the twelve-inch water main. That project actually has a kickoff meeting next week, and it'll take probably ten months to complete. And then we want to finish the admin building. New challenges, the engineering for Micah West will continue. That's a ten-month project. We expect to be hopefully in a position of bidding the sewer system project this time next year. Lawrence Road widening. So we put the new twelve-inch water main in on the west side of Lawrence Road, and now the county is going to widen Lawrence Road, and that's going to require us to remove our eight-inch water main on the east side of Lawrence Road. It was known, it was planned for, we have all the appropriate tapping points included in the new twelve-inch water main installation. What was not known is that the conflicts with our existing pipeline are so severe, it's going to have to be removed. It is an asbestos cement pipeline, so we have now an asbestos removal hazardous waste removal project. So that has changed pricing a little bit on that project, and that's included in the budget. And then we have some other pipeline R and R work to be done. The infrastructure surtax fund, estimated revenues are two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That's still below pre-COVID revenue. Our planned expenditures are one point one million. Drainage repair, road maintenance, we're following the plan that we laid out a couple of months ago. The bridge destruct, bit, bridge construction has been delayed from 2021. It will now be a 2022 project, and our estimated carryforward, as we talked about, will still be three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The CRA, what a bright spot the CRA is and continues to be. We're seeing eight percent increase in assessed valuation in the CRA this year, which is a low for us, but still pretty good considering where we've been. Estimated revenue from the county is going to be thirty thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. The estimated revenue from the town is forty thousand five hundred thirty dollars. So our planned expenditures are very close to what our revenue is. We're going to continue and enhance our beautification program and our business incentive projects. So our estimated carryforward will be minus a hundred and ten dollars. So we're, we're very close to, to a balanced budget right there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the town's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022.
Councilman Pavone, any questions?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Just a couple. Dan, can you, just three or four line items I wanted to ask you about before the meeting, but I didn't get a chance. A special detail revenue, how come that went down half?
Are you talking about next year?
Well, yeah, well, so next year you budgeted for thirty-five thousand, but in 2019 we had seventy.
Yeah. In 2019, we had school district activities. We spent a lot of time at the school district.
That was the school over there?
That was, yeah. So, yes, that was a high for us. I don't anticipate, in talking with the chief, I don't anticipate that our revenues will be that great.
Okay.
But that, we don't make any money on police special details. We, we make like two dollars an hour.
So it's really not a loss.
So, yeah, what, what's coming in is revenue is going out directly under expenditure.
Okay.
I, I make those numbers match in the budget.
There was one other question. Let me find it here. Highlighted it.
Um, technical question, help us out with water. It, it says here that when we purchased water from Village of Palm Springs and then purchased water from City of Lake Worth, it looked like the price, the, the prices are going down. Can you explain to me why our purchase, but then the draft, no, I'm sorry, the draft 2022 budget has it going up? I just couldn't understand the fluctuation in the price of water.
So every year, the county, Lake Worth and Palm Springs, on, i- i- independent of us, decide what the rate should be for water.
Okay.
And will tell us what that rate is, and we then adjust our rates. Our code currently says that we can adjust for pass-throughs, so we adjust our rates accordingly.
Are we usually on budget, or, I mean, I mean, does it work out right in the end?
We make it work out right in the end, yeah. I mean, it's, in the rate study discussion that we had a couple of months ago, it's very apparent that our rates need to change. We, we adjust for the pass-through, but we have not been adjusting for the change in our cost associated with providing services. So, so do we collect enough to pay our bills? Yes, but we can do better. Okay, that was all I had, thank you.
Vice Mayor Schalhoub.
Dan, thank you for meeting with me and going over the entire budget. I think we did it just under two hours, so that was, that was refreshing. But I appreciate your hard work and staff's hard work. I just, no question, but just a comment to see if you can, so we can see a picture. When we negotiated the CRA being formed with the county, we made a deal with them. It was a, it was a partnership, and we said, we want, when we get to this level of the value of the property, we'll give you X amount of percentage of the revenue. Can, it's not here, but can you send it to us under separate cover exactly what that step ladder looks like?
Yes.
So, because I know, I think it was last year or the year before, I think we went up about fifteen percent.
Correct.
Of all the surrounding area increase in value, while the town in, did a separate increase in value is, I think, much lower. But now, the CRA quadrant, if you will, is, is coming in at eight percent. I just wanted to see what that value is, because we have it here at thirty million, and I, I thought we had a goal set at, and I forgot what that goal is, to be honest.
I, I will be happy to provide that information. If you take a look at page twenty-six.
Got it.
At the top of the page, on the right-hand side, it says forty-five percent. That number is forty-five, that number represents that we're almost halfway to the first adjustment point in our TIF. So the agreement that was put together is, as you remember, we collect ninety-five percent of the tax increment financing up to a certain dollar amount. At that dollar amount, it drops back to seventy-five percent of the amount of money that the county collects, and then it drops to fifty percent. So that forty-five percent says that we're forty-five percent of the way to that first step-down point. But I will, I will send that information.
Doesn't have to be elaborate, but you understand what I'm saying? So everyone on the council will be reminded that this is the representation that we made, and the, I don't want to call it the art of the deal, but, but for that's deal, and becoming a strategic partner with the county, probably the CRA would not have been maintained. So thank you very much, Dan.
I don't have any questions for you, Dan. Great work. You and I met, obviously, and you answered all my questions, and so thank you very much for putting this together.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any audience comments? Mr. Clark, when you have a chance to get situated, is anybody writing in, or do you have any comments, questions? All right. Good evening. If you could state your name and where you live.
Sure. My name is Martine Davis, and I live at seven nine three one Westlake Drive. And so my question is, I'm attempting to put a pool in my backyard, and LB Larry Rowe is the contractor that I hired to do that. So he submitted a, the permits, but one was denied because there is a twenty-foot setback.
Again, I just, I don't, I
No.
I do intend to cut you off, but not disrespectfully so.
Okay.
Do you have a question on the budget workshop that was just presented?
No.
Okay. We're addressing the budget workshop at the moment?
Good budget. Thank you for using.
She did. I've been, we'll be more than happy to, to address what you have to say.
Okay, I thought this was the time.
Not yet.
Okay.
We're going to do this.
I'll sit back and wait.
It's a long meeting, but the next is going to be the CRA.
Okay.
And that'll probably last maybe like fifteen minutes or so.
Cool.
And then, and then the next is the actual town meeting.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Sorry for any confusion there.
Thank, thank you. It's that third one.
Mr. Clark, anything regarding the budget from the audience attending remotely?
No.
Any written questions ahead of time?
No.
All right. Take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Yes.
All right, second by Councilman Rodriguez, all in favor? All right. We're moving on to CRA meeting for July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. We'll have a call to order, or, sorry, roll call.
Chairman Paul Schalhoub.
Present.
Vice Chairman Robert Schalhoub.
Here.
Commissioner Gregory Freebold. Commissioner Valtine Rodriguez.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Albert Pavone.
Here.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pavone, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a presentation of the proposed budget for the 2021, 2022.
Wait, 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 what happened to the consent agenda? I'm sorry, did I miss one?
Did I, did I ask? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Thinking of a second, all right. Second, all in favor?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right, Mr. Clark, round number two.
So I am back here. I'm going to show my screen again. I have another hour-long slide presentation, or at least the same slide that you just saw at the end of the other budget presentation. We're collecting revenue thirty thousand eight hundred sixty dollars from the county. We are investing forty thousand five hundred thirty dollars of the town's budget in the CRA, planned expenditures of seventy-two thousand. We are presenting a balanced budget, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Pavone? Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Vice Mayor Schalhoub?
Thank you very much, Dan.
All good here?
Thank you very much.
All right, no new business. Right back to audience comments on the CRA workshop, CRA budget. Okay.
We have nothing online.
All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on now to the regular Town of Lake Clark Shores Council meeting for July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. May we have a roll call, Mary, please?
Mayor Paul Schalhoub.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Schalhoub.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold. Councilmember Valtine Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavone.
Here.
Take a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
So move.
Any a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Moving on to presentations, we have none, all the way down to public hearing, imposing a non-advalorem special assessment for nuisance abatement involving the property located at seven seven three zero Westlake Drive, Lake Clark Shores. Mr. Clark?
So this is a parcel we've talked about a lot. We have not been able to find anyone willing to take responsibility for the parcel. So we went out and, following our rules and regulations for nuisance properties, noticed the property, and then went in and mowed the lawn and cleaned up the brush and brought it back into compliance from that perspective. Now, we'd like to be able to bill for those services, so we're asking that you allow us to move forward with imposing the non-advalorem assessment to pay for the cost of that cleanup.
How much?
I think it's, it's over a thousand dollars, isn't it?
It's right at a thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
It's, it's in our, it's in, it's here somewhere else, like a thousand something. I know, I saw it.
Do we need a motion?
Well, we have audience comments on this, or any written questions, and then we can go to council comments. The motion won't take place until we get to unfinished business.
Actually, this is supposed to be a public hearing, so we need to open the public hearing, ask for, for comments from the public, and then close the public hearing.
All right. We are now open for public comments on the non-advalorem special assessment for nuisance abatement at the seventy-seven thirty Westlake Drive property. Anyone, anyone want to speak against it or for it?
No one online, Mr. Mayor.
No one here in chambers? All right. Any council member want to talk about the nuisance abatement?
That's just a quick question. Who is Betty Carroll Turhoom? I mean, nobody can locate her, or?
No. What we understand from comments from the neighbors and elsewhere is that she went into hospice, but we cannot locate her anywhere. We've tried everything we can think of to find relatives. This has been an ongoing issue for probably six months now, with the code board exhausting all resources before we came to this conclusion and approach.
And she owns a property free and clear?
Don't know that.
Okay, we don't really know. Do we even know if she's the owner? Well, this property owner.
Whatever we have on paper is what we're going by.
That's what we're going by, okay. That's all I had.
The amount is eleven hundred and eighty dollars, at least according to the information in the packet. Dan, on a couple of occasions, I've seen like a white car there at the, at this property. Have we ever been able to catch someone actually at the property, regardless if they're the owner or not?
Yes, and the neighbors use that area a lot to park.
Oh.
Why not?
Here, I thought we were on to something.
And, Mr. Mayor, if we could close the public hearing, I'd appreciate that.
Let's close the public hearing. It's closed now?
Okay, wait, we need a motion to close.
All right. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Second? Councilmember Pavone, second, all in favor? All right. Public hearing is adjourned.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. We're moving on to unfinished business, approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, imposing a non-advalorem special assessment for nuisance abatement at the involving the property located at seventy-seven thirty Westlake Drive. I'll take a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Mr. Clark, you're up again. Presentation of the proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
So we've already been through the presentation once. Probably no need to go through it again, so let's just cut straight to the chase. We want to confirm that the millage rate is six point two seven nine eight percent. Set the tentative millage rate for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two at the same number, six point two seven nine eight percent. I guess percent's not the right word, six point two seven nine eight mil. Certify the rollback millage rate at five point nine seven seven five. Set a time and a date for the first public hearing on the proposed millage and budget, which would be Monday. Note, Monday, September thirteenth. There are conflicts with our normal Tuesday meeting, so we have to go with Monday, September thirteenth, at six thirty PM, and the date for the second public hearing to adopt millage and budget would be September twenty-eighth at six thirty PM.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any questions before we move on to addressing his requests? I'll take a motion to confirm the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one millage rate of six point two seven nine eight.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Take a motion to set the tentative millage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two at six point two seven nine eight.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Take a motion to certify the rollback millage rate at five point nine seven seven five? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll take a motion to set the first and second public hearing dates and times for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, six thirty PM.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All those motions carried.
Just a quick question. September thirteenth and September twenty-eighth, is the twenty-eighth a Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, so once a Monday, once Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we'll go on to the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero three, amending chapter eighteen, elections to add the word designate, to allow the town clerk or town clerk designate to perform election duties and to change the town qualifying dates. Mary?
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter eighteen elections by amending section eighteen dash one, town clerk designated as supervisor of elections, and section eighteen dash five B, conduct of election and notice of general election required to include town clerk or town clerk designate. Section eighteen dash seven, candidate qualifications, procedure for becoming candidate by amending the candidate qualifying period. From section eighteen dash nine, appointment of inspectors and clerk to replace the duty of the town manager with the duty of the town clerk or town clerk designate, and replace the word inspectors with poll workers, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, and an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right, I'll take a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also have the town, or the interlocal agreement between my government online and the Town of Lake Clark Shores for building permit software, still pending legal review.
So if I may, Mr. Mayor, we investigated four different methodologies to meet the requirements of House Bill ten fifty-nine and move our permitting to a web-based activity. We believe that this interlocal agreement with this organization is the best way for the town to go. It is also the least expensive way for the town to go, probably will cost us right around a thousand dollars a month for the rest of our lives, the way things are looking. But it's a very positive program. It's a very powerful program. It's currently used by Juno Beach Jupiter Inlet. Jupiter Inlet Colony, Palm Beach Shores, and a few other local municipalities. So we, to answer your question, Charlie has completed his review, and all of the changes are incorporated in this document and it is ready to sign.
This is the one that's in our, in our packet, in our, in our government, in our governmental agreement for SCPDC software?
Yes.
Okay.
So what we're doing, this is a governmental entity in Louisiana that is created this software and is maintaining this software and is marketing this software. And they use it, a number of other cities across the nation use it. It's great because it's a government-to-government, so they're not out to make any profit, so basically we're paying for cloud storage and guidance, education, and maintenance.
Are you looking for a motion, approval from the town to execute and enter into this agreement?
Yes, sir.
I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is part of the unfunded mandate.
This is, this is part of the unfunded mandate.
Is this going to allow us, allow individuals to check for their permit statuses online?
Yes.
Is it going to have the actual permits online as well?
Yes. And all the backup documents, which we're still struggling with from a security perspective, because your house plans will be online.
And how does, how does that intertwine into the whole ADA issue that we've encountered in the past by posting documents?
We are going to attempt to get everything from the homeowner ADA compliant. We know that drawings won't be, and we're just going to have to put them up there and and hope that nobody takes exception to that, because we really have no options. We're, we're literally between a federal rock and a state hard place.
I appreciate, I can't imagine how you could get an audio version of a drawing.
Yeah.
All right. Now, we are on to audience comments. And Miss, Miss Davis.
Thank you. Sorry for any correction.
No, not a problem.
What's the, the street address of where you live?
Seven nine three one Westlake.
Seven nine three one Westlake.
Yeah, it's looking a little bad now. I just moved the septic tank, so.
Oh, right.
Oh, you're the, the hump there.
Oh, God, yeah.
Is that, is that finally done?
It's finally done. I'm just waiting. It's been raining so much, I can't get my lawn service to come in yet and put grass down, because they have to kill, I guess, they wanted to spray to the weeds and all that stuff first and then put it down, so, but every time they go to do it, it rains. Welcome to Florida, someone.
Your driveway is the, in a lot of papers, yes?
Yes, the, the yellow travertine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Really nice.
So you know where it is.
What can we do for you today?
So, um, again, I'm trying to put a pool in my backyard, thusly the, the removal of the septic system and all that fun stuff. Larry's my contractor, Larry Rowe, and we submitted a permit, but it was, I don't want to say denied, but it got shot back because of a twenty-foot setback from my neighbor's yard or my neighbor's property line. And what my question is, is that there's, if, if we, if we shift the pool, then I have to take down this beautiful bottlebrush tree that's probably thirty or forty years old, and I really don't want to do that. It looks beautiful, my yard, I don't want to do that. So I'm wondering, I know for that there's a twenty-foot setback for pools, but for
Structure.
Structures, thanks. There's a ten-foot setback, so I'm wondering what's the difference or why there's a difference between a twenty-foot setback for a pool and a twenty-foot setback for a structure?
Dan, do you have any insight on that?
So I looked at the code. Councilmember Pavone brought this to my attention, and I looked at the code, and the code does seem to be a little different. If this, if a pool is not roofed, it can be no closer than twenty feet from the side yard. But if you put up a structure or enclose it, then it can be ten feet from the side yard. Which I, I don't understand why there's a difference there. It, it's one of those code sections that I'm sure somewhere historically made sense, but I don't understand it. Staff, we'd be happy to change the code if that would be council's direction.
So essentially, if someone put a roof structure
Over your pool.
Over the pool, they can get ten feet closer to the property line.
Yeah, or screened it. Put a screen structure in or put a roof over your pool. You could be ten feet away from the property line.
And that doesn't make a lot of sense either, because about one-third of the pools in the town can't have structures over them because of the utility lines in the back. So like, so that's really affecting everybody differently, if you think about it.
Yeah.
Did it, I, yeah.
I know that, because I'm in the middle of a pool too, and I could not put a structure over it because
Utility line.
Because of the twenty-foot or however many feet it is from that utility line. So.
Yeah.
So what's your proposal? Are you trying to, you didn't go for a variance yet?
I haven't gone for a variance yet. I spoke to Mr. Pavone about possibly like changing the ordinance here in Lake Clark to make both the pool and structures ten feet.
When I, sorry not to cut you off, Mayor. When I spoke to her, she goes, there's a twenty-foot setback.
Please, please use your mic.
When I spoke to Miss Davis, she goes, I have a twenty-foot setback. I go, no, no, I'm telling you, we just went through this. It's a ten-foot setback. And then she goes, I'm telling you, it's twenty feet. So then I said, let me call Dan. When I called Dan and he shows it to me, I was like, that made no sense. Why we have a ten-foot and then a twenty-foot?
Right.
You know, so we're going to see if we have staff look into why there's a difference.
So, Mr. Clark, we don't know why, but it's currently the town's recommendation to what make the setbacks equal and therefore make the pool setback ten feet as opposed to twenty feet? Regardless of enclosure?
We see no reason why it should be any different than any structure. Our, our setback requirements for structures are ten feet, so she could put an addition on her house, but she can't put a pool in. It doesn't seem to make any sense. So we're open to whatever council's pleasure is. Certainly, we see no reason not to change it. But.
Yeah. Wish I'd caught this last summer. I would have, because I had the same exact problem. I had to go twenty feet because I couldn't put a structure over.
Right.
Now my pool's ten feet smaller because of whenever it gets done, but yeah, I, I signed a contract in August, it's still not done, but I, I see your point, I mean.
And I don't, I don't think I'm going to be the only one. I think just due to COVID and everyone's kind of re-vamping and beautifying their homes. I think this is going to be an issue further down the road as well.
Any council comments on asking the town to revisit the code to allow it to be ten feet?
What I would like to, if I may, Mr. Mayor, there must have been a reason why. I don't know the date and when it was changed or last addressed, but have staff recommend, make the recommendation to us. Do we keep it at twenty feet, or do we extend it? Do we increase the, the structure to twenty feet, or do we decrease the, the pool to ten feet? Understand what I'm saying? We got to figure out why. Once the staff can make this recommendation and proposal, I think we're ready to be done.
I mean.
That doesn't make sense.
Well, the, correct me if I'm wrong, is the town recommending that we, you've already done your investigation, you've made your recommendation, yes?
We, we've done our investigation. We cannot find, with the history that's here at the town, with Town Matters, we cannot find why this was set this way.
Okay.
So our recommendation would be to change it to ten feet. We just went through the process about a year ago of changing our setback and standardizing all of the setback requirements at ten feet for structures.
That's what I was looking.
For buildings.
That's what.
So we, we would recommend that we change the setback for pools to ten feet.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Let it be written, let it be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that as a so moved, and is there a second?
A second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
We'll be back in August with, with first reading.
If you want to get with Mr. Clark afterwards to figure out the timing of all that.
Okay.
I'm sure he can give it to you.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
When, when's your pool supposed to be started?
Well.
Just out of curiosity.
Well, I'll put it to you this way. It took eight months to get the septic tank moved around, and I just, I'll be, took a deposit in February, and it's been one thing after another with just.
They took my deposit in August, so don't feel bad.
Oh, last August.
Yeah, last August.
I, I was hoping for a Halloween pool party, but I think it's more
Good luck. Guess what?
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Any audience comments from online?
Nothing online. Mr. Mayor, we do have a couple of email questions.
Sure.
The first one is, what is the status of sixty nine hundred Westlake? We've been discussing since March twenty twenty. What are the updates? Can we keep single-family zoning, and please list this lot for sale for single-family home? We met with our planning consultant, Mr. Fleishman, and he is preparing the comp plan changes that we discussed with Doty Glass a few months back, and that's moving forward in the process. It will allow that parcel to either be professional office or single-family residential. There'll be no other use that will be allowed on that parcel.
And based on our prior discussions, what, it doesn't seem like it's going to get sold anytime in twenty twenty one, is that right?
Probably accurate.
Okay.
Well, the longer we hold on to it, the more it's worth.
At the moment.
Dan, for the record, can you tell us the, what's the appraisal as a single family versus the appraisal for commercial?
I haven't looked at this in probably since March of twenty twenty. But at that time, the I'm not going to say commercial, I'm going to say professional office appraisal was four hundred thousand dollars, and the residential estimate that we received, not an official appraisal, was less than a hundred thousand dollars.
Significant difference.
Dan, can you tell us who asked that question?
The, yes. Deana Schmidt.
Okay.
The next question comes from Sarah Davy. And this is, again, the same question we had last month concerning when we're going to put the basketball hoops back up. And I'm still uncomfortable doing that with the rise in the number of cases, the fact that basketball is a contact sport. It's different than tennis. It's different than other sports where you're more socially distanced. I think it's still unwise to put the basketball hoops up just yet.
You, yeah. Do you have a number in mind that you want to see for when town decides to put them on?
I, I would like to see the headline in the news stop saying that cases are increasing and that the youth are targeted.
Okay.
Because the Delta variant right now is attacking youth much more than it's attacking anybody else.
Dan, are we in section forty one or forty three of the, the, the code?
The census, census track forty three.
Forty three. And you recall that number?
They've stopped publishing that on a daily or weekly basis. We get it now once a month. And the last time, we were still in the middle zone. There's two zones above us and two zones below us. So we were still increasing at eight to thirteen cases a day.
Dan, could we, could we allow basketball with a vaccine passport?
He's joking.
It was a joke. That was a wink. I just wanted to see your reaction. I'm sorry. But, so your recommendation is safety is paramount. I mean, I will tell you one thing, Dan, though. You know, we don't have our pavilion open to people, but people are always in there. I mean, people have parties there now, and it's kind of a free-for-all because they don't have to reserve it, because we don't reserve it anymore. So I'm just saying that sometimes when you tell people they can't do stuff, they do it anyway, but I guess with basketball.
If there's no hoop.
There's no hoop. Yeah.
It wouldn't, hey, Smith, did the basket? Peach basket.
Any other comments on this topic?
I mean, I, they're not going to play basketball with masks on, so.
You can't.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean. You know.
I would like to see them up sooner than later, but we can revisit it next meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Any questions since we started our discussion?
No.
All right. Moving on to status reports. Chief, we'll start with you.
All right, my report is attached to your packet. If there's any questions, feel free.
Just one quick question, Wes. If I may.
Yeah.
You, you gave us that report with the pictures of the cars.
Right, what I did is I wanted the council to see the artificial intelligence and the technology that we're using with the five-camera system that's spread out through the town. We processed and checked over eighty thousand tags.
So are you able to tell the exact moment that that picture's taken and?
Yeah. If you look, you'll see with the intelligence through computer analyzation, it tells you the make, the color, even at night, how many times the car's been through the town. Some people that live here may be thirty, forty times. A police vehicle could be forty, fifty times during a certain period. But I wanted you all to see and see, actually, the copies that you have are not as good as the ones that I have, because they're copies of copies. But, you know, I had some questions and inquired about it through the council, so I thought to let you know they're up and running, they're doing a great job. It's a great tool for the city if we need to investigate a criminal offense.
I guess the question I have, or maybe Bob would have, is can you use this in a divorce proceeding or like an investigation or something? Is this open to the public?
Our, the, this camera system is not open to the public. Now, if you were like in a gated community, that could be a different issue. A lot of gated communities do use this technology, and you could probably get access. This system is for the police department. I don't know if you could subpoena or try to get that information.
Okay.
But it's, we're dealing with criminal activity, not civil activity.
How long is this data stored?
The, the data is stored for thirty days. If we have something that happens or something that is concerning, we can download it and save it, but the idea of the system, the computer disposing of it in thirty days, if we do get a, a request on an investigation, you don't want to have to process hundreds and hundreds of thousands of pictures. So the idea is thirty days, that's what's kept, and then after that, it starts all over.
I love it. I think it's great. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Pavone?
Does it alert the town, like someone has an expired tag, or?
Yes, that system has not been turned on yet, but it will tell you if your license is suspended. It'll tell you if you're wanted for criminal activity, no insurance and, and a lot of that. Now, there's different ways that you handle that, because you don't know who is actually driving the vehicle, so you're going to need some other probable cause. But the, that database was not turned on for this activity. What, what we did is this was, this was activated to position the cameras and to get an idea how the, the computer and the lighting and the technology is solar, so we had to make sure that the system went up and running. It's, it's done through a cell phone system. So there's no cables. It's all done directly. And it's handled by the company, which, which is, I want to thank Dan for his support in, in being involved with me and looking into this technology and meeting with the people. The, the system's been updated three times since we've had it. That's how quick the technology is changing.
Wow. That's wonderful.
Yep.
Way better than us having our own, uh, system here that we had to run. Vice Mayor Shalhoub, any questions for the chief?
Chief, thank you very much.
Looks like we, uh, Officer Lenny got a, a letter thanking him for his hard work. Did I see that correctly?
Um, yes, they assisted one of our residents. I think there was a death in the family. I've been out of town and they assisted the widow assisting her. And we got a letter thanking the police department for the assistance.
I think that's wonderful as well. All right. I would say Charlie, but Charlie's not here.
No. No, I see. He does have a report though in the, in the file. I really wouldn't have anything to add.
Any questions?
None.
All right. Mr. Clark?
Uh, my report's there. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me. And I have a couple of things I'd like to add. So questions?
Why don't we do the, what you want to add first?
All right. Um, you may have seen the article in the post about Governor DeSantis and $29 million going to small cities. The key there was small urban cities. We don't qualify because we're suburban. So, um, that, most of that money went to the panhandle. Uh, the second thing is, uh, there have been quite a few noise complaints, uh, from an Airbnb that we have in town. And we had a meeting this morning, uh, the chief and Emily and Dana and I to talk about how we were going to approach that issue. And what we would like to do with your support is we would like to change the code. The key to the changes in the code, I can sum up in, uh, four kind of bullet points. First, we want to, uh, change the code to allow all of the police, not simply the code enforcement officer, to write citations for noise. The second thing is we want to change the code to have the code enforcement board be the adjudicator for, uh, noise complaints. Right now it's the county court. So we want to bring it back in and keep it local. We want to change the code, um, for access to the noise sources. So, uh, think about lighting. Our current lighting code says that if you believe your neighbor is creating an issue with lighting, that we measure the lighting, uh, six feet off the ground at the fence, at the property line. We want to be able to do the same thing for noise. Right now we don't have that ability. So if somebody complains about noise, our options right now are to go knock on the door of the offending property and ask them to turn it down. We don't have any data. We don't have any ability to say this was an issue. So we want to change the code to give us that opportunity. Uh, and finally, excuse me, and finally, we want to be able to change the code to cite the owner of the, of the property, not the person that's there creating the noise. We want to cite the owner of the property and we want to have those, citations be progressive. So the first one might be a hundred dollars and/or a warning at the officer's discretion. The second one is $250, no discretion. The third one is $400 and the fourth one is $500. We're only allowed to go to $500 by statute, so we can't go above that. But by citing the homeowner, we think that we'll get the right person paying attention to, uh, who he's renting to and how he's renting and hopefully bring it, um, into, uh, compliance. We also think that since this will be a code that is citywide, be challenged for targeting Airbnbs. This will pertain to everybody the same way.
The revisions that you're talking about, because we addressed the whole noise ordinance issue a while ago, like I think it was last year at length, you know, different decibel levels. Are you looking to change that or are you just looking to change how we're enforcing it?
Change how we're enforcing it.
Okay. With regard to, is this property, uh, near Westlake or is it a neighbor of Westlake? Okay. I, I've spoken to the, one of the affected homeowners as well. Stepping up the fines. Why don't we, why don't you just do 250 and then 500, call it a day, be done?
Because it's going to be citywide. So if we have somebody that, uh, got up and mowed their lawn one morning and got a complaint, they don't necessarily need to be fined $250. So we want some latitude for the, the, um, accidental issues, so to speak.
Don't you have to measure it to cite them? So then when the officer shows up to measure, wouldn't the lawnmower just stop and then there wouldn't be a?
You're showing up at the complainant's house. You're not showing up at the owner's house.
Oh, you go to the complainant's house property line and measure it from there?
Correct.
Okay.
Little stealth action.
Well, it's not only that, but it's also helping them understand what our current code says, what the current level of sound is in our code. So they read the meter. We, we hold the meter up there and if the meter comes up at, at 54 dB and our code says we take action at 60, we want to be able to talk to the complainant and help educate the complainant at the same time.
Can we have the noise meter here?
Everybody will have the same app on their phone, Decimal X. That's what we'll use for the noise meter.
Is that?
Yes, it is.
An approved app to measure? Okay.
And I would also suggest that you would have a video of it, audio, video.
Okay.
And Mike went, Mike?
He's turning your body camera on.
Yeah, I was going to say.
If I may, um, Mr. Mayor, with your permission.
Sure.
You want to just cite the owner and I'm thinking, why can't you cite both the owner and the occupant? Because one, because the occup, the owner becomes vicariously responsible for the actions of the occupant.
Exactly.
But I would, but that doesn't, if you get involved in an automobile accident, you cite the, the driver and the owner. Uh, and I'll start over again. If you get involved in an automobile accident and there's litigation, you cite the, uh, the driver and you cite the owner. So why would you just want to cite the owner and not the person that's actually caused the, the, uh, the situation?
We don't have any teeth against the person that doesn't live here.
If they don't pay.
Yeah. If you don't comply, we end up putting a, a lien on the property ultimately, yeah?
Right.
Right. They don't live here. They don't have a property. Can't lien them.
Right.
We don't have a criminal noise ordinance, do we?
No.
No.
Not like West Palm does and places like that.
We'll, we'll look into it.
It's just a conversation.
We'll look into it.
I brought the, I, I don't know whether anybody else in the council brought this to Dan's attention, but, um, I just wanted to thank staff for their quick response. I think I, uh, sent you an email on that, Dan. I was real impressed with Dana and Emily's quick response to, um, our neighbors concerned about, about this issue. So, um, thanks. Cause something's got to be changed because here there's, there's a 72 hour notice requirement and that's just nuts. Nuisance provide, emission of a noise is a nuisance if it lasts more than 72 hours.
The, the, uh, if I can expand slightly, the approach that we're taking is going to help address a lot of short-term code violation issues like loose dogs. Um, we have a couple of homes where the dogs are chronically loose and, um, we don't really have any way to put any teeth, so to speak, into the homeowner to get them to pay attention to the fact that they have to control their animals. We think this will also work for vegetation before a storm, where we now have an ability to go out and cite folks for putting vegetation out ahead of a storm. So there's a, a number of other issues that we think this approach will help resolve as well.
So this goes back to conversation, you know, had a long time ago where all the officers are going to have the ability to write a code violation.
Correct.
Perfect. Long overdue.
Golly, yes.
All right.
So.
But then Al is going to call for more education.
Correct. Yeah. Which is why we said the first one is at the discretion of the officer.
Right.
Okay.
So if council is okay with that, Emily will move forward, uh, having something pulled together by the next council meeting.
I'm in favor of. Yeah.
I am too. I'm just, my concern is that we just don't in the future discuss in terms of Airbnb. I think we just need to discuss in terms of it being a bigger problem in the town generally because I can easily see a challenge that this was done because of Airbnbs. That's exactly what, you know, we're not allowed to do. You know what I'm saying? I mean, so I'd like, I'd like make sure that when these citations go out, they're not just to Airbnb people. It needs to be all people around because if we've just given citations to Airbnbs residents or not, we have visitors or whoever they are, renters. Um, you know, I feel like, you know, someone down the road could say we're, we're targeting.
It, it, well, that would depend on who makes the complaint, right? If no one's complaining on someone that's not an Airbnb or a short-term rental, that's, you know what I'm saying?
Right. We want to respond to all complaints everywhere.
Exactly.
Right.
We're exactly on board with that.
Okay, that's, that's all I'm concerned about.
It may turn out that most of it is Airbnb because our residents are, they respect our community and respect their neighbors. But we're not targeting Airbnbs. This will cover the entire town.
Okay.
You know, some of those places have like built-in noise meters. So the owners or management companies can actually regulate their renters. Which I, I, I thought that was interesting to share. Any other additions, Mr. Clark?
No, sir. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Clark?
Can you get back with some suggested dates for the, um, um, the events in December? For the tree lighting and the parade and also, um, let's have a conversation with the, um, barbecue. And let's put that on the calendar. So, please. Thank you.
We usually do that in September, Mr. Vice Mayor. Is that okay?
Sure. All right. Just didn't want to lose it. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to council comments. Start with Mr. Councilman Rodriguez.
I have no further comments.
Councilman Pavone?
No, no more comments.
Vice Mayor Shalhoub?
Um, want everybody to know that, uh, the mayor and the town administrator myself, we're going to go up to what? Uh, Orlando for the Florida League of Cities, um, conference this Friday. I have been appointed to the municipal administration. Uh, the mayor is with the finance, correct?
Yep.
Finance taxation. And Dan, you're on the.
Land use and economic development.
There you go. So, um, and we will report back to you. So I wanted to let everybody know that the, um, we received a, a letter, uh, here from, uh, a neighbor on Westlake about the, uh, traffic and, um, people throwing or disposing of, uh, dog poop. Can you just look into this and handle this?
I, I'm not sure what I can do about the traffic, but we can definitely.
I don't know about the dog traffic either. I know the chief probably put up the, um, put up the, the, um, what are you?
Speed trailer.
Speed trailers, trailer. I was looking.
Yeah, the, uh, we monitor that. The traffic, uh, uh, numbers have not changed. The issue was, you notice in that letter about trucks and stuff.
Right.
We've had quite a few people have had septic tanks put in. And of course you have tractor trailers and, and all kinds of equipment and both of you live in that area. So you know, that's what was going on. But, um, most of that stuff's been installed now unless somebody else has an issue. But we did have three or four right in the area and they were like one right after another. So every time you'd come and go, you, you would have dump trucks and, and all of that.
Yeah, and yeah.
So.
And then we have those swimming pool people.
Yeah.
Good.
You know, God forbid we should, uh, you know, this is, this is life, right? The, um, I think we're doing pretty good.
We have, a, a, as an aside, we do have a record number of building permits. So we probably have a record number of trucks bringing materials into town as well.
Wow.
Anything further?
I think I'm missing something, but, uh, like if I remember it, I'll raise my hand. Thanks.
All right. Want to congratulate Richard Hernandez on being appointed to the zoning board and Deborah Moody and Deborah Ann Gregorian for being appointed to the code enforcement board. Look forward to y'all working with the town to keep our town as wonderful as it is and improve it going forward. Those are all my comments for the day. I'll take a motion.
I'm moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Davis, thanks for, uh, for coming down. Sorry for the, uh, also thanks for bringing.